Everybody live, huh? Okay, sounds good. Okay, welcome everyone to the City of Beaumont Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'll start with the land acknowledgement. The City of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all first peoples of this land, whether they be of First Nation, Métis or Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich vibrant communities across this land. As we gather here in Treaty Six Territory and the homeland of the Métis Nation, we acknowledge that we are all Treaty people and have ongoing responsibilities to protect and honor the Treaty, the inherent rights of the people and the land. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to number two on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Just looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Mayor Dunlop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that September nineteen twenty twenty three committee of the whole meeting agenda be adopted as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. And I just would like to also note that Councilman Mokoff Swain will be joining us shortly here. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to item three, which is the adoption of the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the committee of the whole July eighteenth twenty twenty-three minutes. Councilman Barnhart.
I'd be pleased to move that the July eighteen twenty twenty-three committee of the whole meeting minutes be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Looking for any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Call the question. Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. And that passes. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, which is presentations and delegations. Tonight, we have three presentations, delegations. We first have the grant program review, followed by the second quarterly financial report, followed by the Protective Services Second Quarter Report. So we'll begin with four point one, Grant Program Review. Can you push your button? Welcome.
Wonderful. Good evening.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. My name is Joanna Mancher. I'm here as the Team Lead Arts and Events with the Department of Recreation. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to return in front of the Committee of the Whole to present some findings about further review and analysis of our current grant funding framework and to provide council with the opportunity to review and provide feedback for a proposed grant funding framework revision. Tonight, I'll be presenting two options for council to consider. Alternatively, a final option would be to continue operating as is. So that, of course, is a third option. With that, I'll present the information and then open up the floor for questions and feedback and comments. I first came before council back in October and provided the committee with some information. Sorry, next slide, please.
I think you got to click. Give it a try. Perfect.
There we go. I first presented before the committee, the whole back in October and provided information regarding our current funding framework. Subsequently, there was additional review and gathering of information and analysis. Through that work, a goal was identified that there's an opportunity to elevate our service standards by revising our existing funding framework. Information was gathered through analysis of existing state, so in terms of the existing grant programs and how we manage annual and multi-year funding agreements. There was also an opportunity to connect with stakeholders. There was a review of grants that have been previously awarded through our two grant funding programs, the Community Grant Program, the Arts Grant Program. There was also a cross jurisdictional review conducted of municipalities from the Greater Edmonton area. From this review, particularly when looking at the data that was, you know, qualitative, or sorry, quantitative, there was a qualitative aspect where feedback from stakeholders was received. And through this, there were three common themes that were identified. There was a strong desire amongst nonprofit organizations, grant applicants, grant recipients, those folks that have, and organizations, I should say, that have existing funding agreements with the city and have subsequently approached the city for support. There has, there's a significant desire for for funding agreements that would allow for longer term planning. So that would be through either permanent or multi-year funding agreements. Tied into this was a desire for more, just more information about the process, consistency between grant programs and other funding mechanisms and increased transparency. A very common theme that was heard from a lot of this engagement was that our nonprofit organizations are facing rising costs and volunteer burnout. Essentially, our nonprofit organizations are seeing a need for greater support from the city. At the heart of it, when we look at how the city administratively processes grant funding requests and financial support, there have been noted inconsistencies, gaps or duplication in these processes and programs. Through the review, options have been presented and prepared for tonight for your review. And the intent behind these options, these these potential paths forward is to revise our grant programs and streams to better reflect existing needs, but also and and the anticipated needs for the immediate and short and long term future. To do that, there would be a refinement of the processes which would allow for better management and evaluation of applications, and it would also increase administration's ability to monitor compliance and outcomes from this financial support. As part of the review, there was an evaluation of how other municipalities are approaching grant funding support. And essentially, everybody does it a little bit different. So this really is an opportunity here to take the findings that were noted from other municipalities, also look at the feedback that has been received directly from our own community members and work towards a framework that would provide the best opportunity for all parties. In the review, even though every jurisdiction does tend to do it a little bit differently, there were significant commonalities noted. A few of these are highlighted here on the slide, and there's greater detail in the attachments for the report. Essentially, in terms of annual funding agreements, these amounts were typically most commonly set the year ahead, whereas project-based grants were awarded during the current year. So funding in its entirety was always decided the year previous with significant annual or multi-year agreements being known in advance and then project-based grants being decided as those applications came in. An opportunity for council to see realized certain priorities was through mechanisms through grant programs and the application and evaluation processes. This would be, an example of this would be incorporating, you know, bonus points for certain categories or certain themes or projects that would meet certain outcomes. For the project-based grants, final reports were most often due sixty days after project completion, and there would be a range where project reports, final reports would be due thirty to ninety days with sixty days being the most common. For the annual funding agreements or the longer term agreements, what a commonality is that next year's application was considered the previous year's final report. One last note is that when arts grants or funding for the arts was a standalone category, there were oftentimes frequent further division between organizations, individual artists or other mechanisms to further divide that category. Before you this evening, administration has prepared two recommended options as a way forward for your consideration, with the first option being the preferred choice of administration. In both options, both would see the creation of an operating and major project grant program. So in option one, this becomes a standalone program. Council would be involved in the evaluation and review of the applications coming in by the nonprofit organizations and council would make final decision. In option two, this program would be divided to streams under both the Arts Grant Program and the Community Grant Program. In this option, committees would be significantly more involved in the evaluation. They would do the main review. The committees would then present recommendations to council and council would have the opportunity to make final decisions on that. Both options would see revisions to the Arts Grant Program and Community Grant Program. This would be I would describe this more as administrative process development, consistency, language, improving, you know, ease of readability, consistency in terms of what's being asked from an application form standpoint between the two programs. Both options see the development of a new micro grant program. The idea here is that in the research that was conducted, it was found that other jurisdictions this is a relatively new, new program for grants. It's a way to encourage individuals within the community to act on, you know, great ideas. We often hear wonderful ideas coming from our community members about how to improve neighborhood connections or beautifying a neighborhood, things like that. So this type of program would provide one vehicle for residents to become engaged and act on their act on their ideas and in some ways becomes an opportunity almost to pilot something. Both options would see the FCSS Grant Program, the Recreation Inclusion Subsidy Program, and the existing allocation for scholarships and awards and trophies maintained as they currently operate. Across all options, so whether it's moving forward with option one or two, there are a few common requirements and restrictions that have been identified that would be beneficial for administrative processes. First and foremost, I think helping bring awareness to the recognition that eligibility does not guarantee funding and that groups must present a compelling case for the support that they're requesting and be able to provide communicate the outcomes that the funding has achieved in the past or that will, that they're hoping the funding would achieve in the future. Part and parcel with that is that past funding does not guarantee future funding. Something that has been noted, this is one of those bullet points about a an inconsistency or a duplication is tidying up a little bit around providing a structure for which grant programs, projects would be reviewed under. And in that vein, groups, sorry, recipients would not be eligible to receive funding from multiple city sources for the same project. So the difference here is that if an organization or an applicant were to submit applications for two separate projects, they could potentially be eligible to receive funding from two different city of Beaumont sources. But what we're trying to do is open the pool up for providing the opportunity for funding to be distributed equitably, equitably, and provide opportunity for to support existing projects and existing well-established initiatives that the city has come to know and love, but also set up a foundation that allows for the new applications to come in. And and something that is fairly, I think shouldn't come as too much of a surprise is that any recipient receiving City of Beaumont funds must comply with terms, conditions and reporting requirements. So how would this work? In example, we have a few examples here to look at. So through we have, we have a new group, Organization X. They've never received funding from the City of Beaumont before. Whether that's through approaching council at an open forum, speaking with a counselor at a civic event, being a member on a committee, they say, you know, we've got a great idea. We want to see this event come to town. They would be encouraged to apply for a project-based grant, whether that's through the Community Grant Program or the Arts Grant Program. This application would be reviewed by a jury, recommendations would be presented to council for final decision. Another example would be an organization like the Beaumont Agricultural Society. This group is currently one of the organizations that falls into that legacy agreement category. So they've consistently received some funding over the years from the city. They have projects that are ongoing and they need a formal mechanism to be able to approach council with their ideas, especially if if they have potential initiatives or projects that would see a substantial increase in the request of funding that they're looking to 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 ask for. In this case, they would submit an expression of interest in June of twenty twenty-four. This would allow administration to include this as part of the package that goes to council for review. Along with all of the other applicants that have submitted EOIs, this organization would come before council, present their their idea, their request, and their request would be considered among alongside the other requests that are coming in through this mechanism. At this point, council would have the opportunity to decide full, partial or no funding and as well as to award either an annual funding, enter into an annual funding agreement with the organization or a multi-year funding agreement. Another example is Beaumont Blues and Roots Festival. They're currently one of the organizations that has an existing multi-year funding agreement. Again, they would submit an EOI. They would present their ask in front of council. They could request the same funding that they've had in their previous agreements. They could adjust their funding request, provide the information that's needed, and then council again would decide the opportunity to award full, partial or no funding in an annual or multi-year funding agreement. So for option one here, well, in both cases, option one or option two, this is where the micro grant program comes into play. So a resident has an idea to get people together in their neighborhood for a spring cleanup. They have a great idea. They meet the micro grant program eligibility requirements. They submit the application. Administration evaluates this and awards funding. So now in terms of a timeline, again, the major difference, I'll take the opportunity to remind council that in option one and option two, there's a lot of programs that would stay the same. So the Arts Grant Program and the Community Grant Program would be the same across the board in the sense that they're evaluating the project-based grants and those juries, those committees would review those at set deadlines. The micro grant program would be evaluated by, where administration is proposing that that program would have the evaluations done by administration. Where the big difference now comes into play is whether council is greatly involved in the review process or whether juries or committees are more involved in that for this major project and operating grant stream. In option one and option two, advertising promotion of the opportunity to submit an EOI would be done March through June. June fifteenth would be the expression of interest deadline. By September first, organizations would be required to provide any additional required documentation to support their application, their request. In September, in option one, administration would consolidate these requests and prepare a report to council. In option two, the report would be prepared to be presented to committees. In option one, in October, council would evaluate the requests. Applicants would be required to be present so that there could be a back and forth, some questions asked, clarifying statements made. And then later in November, as part of the entire budget deliberations, council would make final decisions. In option two, the juries do this significant evaluation. The juries then bring their recommendations forward to council in advance of budget deliberation. So there would still be an opportunity for council to ask questions and clarifying, seek clarifying statements, and then council would have final decisions in late November along with the budget deliberations. From a financial analysis perspective, the review that has been undertaken by administration to date has been funded through the current operating budget. Process changes or enhancements should council decide to move forward with changes to how funding framework operates, any changes or enhancements would be reflected in future operating budget requests. At this time, the recommended total funding envelope for twenty twenty-four remains consistent. If we were to move forward, if council were to decide to move forward with option one, all the funding that currently is allocated for all funding agreements would move over. So in option one, any of the existing funding agreements from annual or multi-year, any of these legacy agreements, those numbers would move over intact into a new operating and major project grant program. In option two, that same amount of funding moves over. It's just then split. Anything related to arts would move under the Arts Grant Program and anything non-art would go under the Community Grant Program. Both options would see micro grants developed. An option here would be to reallocate a portion of other project-based grant funds, which would mean that the total funding allocation would remain consistent. It also again, at budget deliberation time, there's an opportunity to increase the total funding envelope, maintain the funding envelope or decrease the funding envelope. And then within that, deciding how to have, how to have the puzzle all come together. In terms of risks, it's been identified that with any financial support and grant funding programs, there is risk for fraud, misuse and waste. So the intention behind the review that's been conducted has been to identify opportunities to make changes to processes and frameworks that would allow mitigation of these risks. How do we do that? Again, I'll go back to how I opened the report. Administration would make changes to the processes to ensure that the funds are used efficiently and effectively while reducing these risks. Revising the programs and the streams to better reflect the existing and anticipated needs, and we refine the administrative processes to better manage and evaluate applications as well as monitoring compliance and outcomes. Now, questions? I assume there will be a few.
Yeah, thank you. You managed to take a whole bunch of information and distill it into a few slides. So that's, that's, that's great. There were more than a few pages to review. So that's also great. So just a couple high level comments from me, and then I'm going to pass it on to the rest of the committee for for council. So light up your mics when, if and when you're ready. But what I just want to say is that the the desire of this program when it was created was to create a annual budget and create a process for folks, groups within the community to come and access grant funding from, from the city. And, you know, we've, we've checked that box. We always knew we were going to do a review, and that's where we're, that's where we're at right now. So that's really good. But the next point that I want to point out, and I was kind of digging through this while the presentation was going on is this document here is a, is a poster card for our twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six strategic plan. And the program that we're talking about tonight and the evolution of this program is in direct alignment with what I'm going to call aspiration number four, reading left to right, that says, strong volunteer spirit and a warm neighborly feeling. And, you know, there's three bullet points under that, and I'm going to read one of them, and it says facilitate volunteerism and solutions that assist community groups to enhance their organizational capacity and self-sufficiency. And that's, and that's, that's why we're here. That's what this program's all about. And that's why this is an important discussion for, for all of us tonight. So I've got more as always, but I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilor McCook and the rest of the committee members. Feel free to turn green when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. So it seems that there is a growing need for grant funding in the community based on the report, and it's evident in the attachment that really shows the breakdown where we get approximately double the requests comparative to the grant funding available. It's great to see that we have a lot of these wonderful events and artists in our community. So happy to support them. To Councilor Van Newkirk's point, I really like the addition of the micro grant program as I believe it goes into council's strategic plan and goals. Reviewing this was clearly quite the undertaking as evidenced by the report. So thank you for putting this together. A few questions. So one of the things I'm not very clear on council's role, especially as it pertains to option one and two. So in option one, is it just that we're reviewing the major grants? And the other parts and grants are still done by the committees? And in option two, it breaks it down into streams. So what was the benefit of that and then not bringing, breaking it down in option one?
Sure. Thank you very much for the question through the chair to the committee member, McCook. That, that really is a great question, and I've been here before presenting alongside the Chair of the Grant Funding Advisory Committee, as well as the Arts Council, on the decisions that were made regarding applicants to both of those programs. The last time that I was here with the Grant Funding Advisory Committee, I did take a note that there was a request from council to see more information about how the committee members came to their decisions. So that request from council is is phenomenal. That's a, that's a, that's exactly what we should be, what administration should be providing. And this is an opportunity to look at the administrative processes through the committees would have the opportunity to review the project-based grant applications. And then once they come with their recommendations to council, administration would look at, you know, what, what information do we need to be providing in a, you know, more comprehensive manner for council to be even more confident in supporting the recommendations by those committee members. So that would be part of that. Again, whether we go with option one or option two, part of the next steps for this would be improving those administrative processes, improving the application form, improving, improving the the reporting form and improving the flow of communication between administration and council as to the outcomes of those previously awarded funds as well as the anticipated outcomes of the current applicants. So I think in option one, okay. in option one, okay, so to summarize, the project based grants, it would essentially operate the same as what we're doing now. The committees review those. They come with their recommendations forward to council. Council would have the opportunity to ask questions and, and still make final decisions. There would be improvement in the information that's provided to council. Then this next part here is this, this is this, you know, operating grant major project. So this is where we're seeing those significant asks, those longer term, you know, an organization has identified, you know, the need for support is not going away. This is an, this is going to be an ongoing request. You know, and this is how we've identified the needs. This is this request for the, this is the support we're requesting from council. So the difference would be in option one, council would be much more involved directly with the applicants. They would be currently, right now, when groups come before council to request funding, perhaps like the Circle, Thrift Store, BBRF, BSA, Ag Society, those are coming in at different times. What this does, either way in option one or option two, is sets up a mechanism that says, okay, here's our timelines. Any group that would like to request funding, here's the timeline, here's the process, here's how you come before council to to advocate for the needs of your, your organization. Option one would allow council more opportunity to get into the nitty gritty. In option two, council steps back a little bit and puts more onus on the committee members. So as stands right now, anything arts evaluated, so in this case, that would be requests from BBRF, BSA, and potentially other, other organizations, that review would happen by Arts Council members. Once Arts Council members review those major grants, they would come forward to city council, provide that recommendation. Again, there'd be a back and forth. And then that, those decisions are then made in the fall for the following year. So an organization like BBRF would go, okay, we've now entered into an annual funding agreement or a multi-year funding agreement. We know we can count on this for X number of years and this amount. Project based grants would still be the year of. In option two, that request by BBRF, BSA would go to the Arts Council. They would review it, present that recommendation. In option one, there's no jury involvement. It's, it's sort of what we do now, but refined and perhaps more clear and more transparent to other organizations that maybe have not requested funding in that way before.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarity and you guys taking that feedback back and then presenting us with this option. I think that makes it a little more clear for sure. And it makes it more clear for, as you said, organizations who are looking to apply for that kind of multi-year funding and weren't really sure how to go about doing that. How are we tracking whether people are applying for multiple grants for the same project and or event? If they're, you know, maybe hitting different committees? Is that through you?
Thank you very much for the question. Again, through the chair to councillor McCook. Currently, the arts grant program and the grant, community grant program funnel through the same administrative channels. So the current request, the current number of requests is manageable through a very manual process. Often comes down to my memory quite, you know, and then, and then mechanisms to cross reference and check. The application form also asks that explicitly. And in terms of then cross referencing with the FCS S grant program, that would be done through interdepartmental communication. Yeah.
Thank you. I presume then, just when we're talking about misuse and stuff like that, some of that goes into that. A couple more questions?
Yeah, keep going.
And is the rec inclusion budget utilized to its fullest every year?
Again, a very good question. Unfortunately, I can't confirm that at this time, although I recall that if it is not fully, it may not be fully utilized, but I believe it's close. And I can confirm that.
Thank you. And then have we had any feedback on the intake processes or times of the year? As previously, some were once, some were twice. How has that worked for applicants? How will some of these changes impact them moving forward?
Great. Thank you. Again, another great question. The answer is it's very complicated and, and, and unfortunately, there isn't a solution that will work for every group. Regardless of option one or option two, there would be a review of program application dates, the number of intakes. Whenever that happens, there would be, administration's first look would be to create some consistency between the two programs. So of course, feedback is welcome on this, that, you know, if we have the same deadline for both grant programs, when an application comes in, administration takes an initial look and says, oh, this applicant chose the community grant stream, but they're actually needing to be evaluated by the arts grant program. So in that case, that provides a mechanism for that applicant not to get lost and not to miss out on an opportunity to be reviewed. The risk with that is that application deadlines and the number of intakes may not work for all groups and all applicants. There has been feedback received that the timeline doesn't work. That could be part of the next steps in terms of evaluating those project application deadlines. And I think it would be, the, the door is always open for additional review and feedback. And I think, you know, once initial changes are made, it will cause a bit of a ripple effect and will need administration, council, potential applicants will need to assess how all of that is then working. So, long story short, it's complicated. There's probably not a really simple answer. At first glance, it would be a look at to maintain, maintaining two app, two intakes per year for each program.
I appreciate that. It's true. It's, it's difficult to kind of make it work for everybody all the time. So we kind of try and manage and do our best. I think some of that speaks to in the report where you said there was a desire for more consistency and transparency. And I think if we're consistent with when these come out and stuff like that, then with time, people will kind of be able to, to track that and know exactly when it's coming out. But always good to be able to adjust as we go as well. Just one more, if you could just clarify, once the request becomes a line item or for multi-year funding, the funding is then moved under the municipal budget and does not fall under the grants anymore, correct?
Very good question. And if I'm getting anything wrong, I'm sure Mr. De Blanko will correct me. No, the funding would stay under the grants line. However, what this allows for is a mechanism for longer term planning by administration as well as council in terms of looking at the operating budget and being able to perhaps better predict the requests coming in and also respond to new requests as they arise. And the intention is to provide an opportunity for council to review all requests for annual and multi-year funding together so that requests aren't coming in and being looked at independently and without context of other requests for financial support by other organizations.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, say we have a hundred thousand dollars for community grants and we, you know, allot twenty thousand to multi-year line item event or program. So now that committee only has eighty thousand to distribute, correct? Hundred thousand, took twenty K out.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Thank you very much councillor McCook. If we could take a, I'll encourage everyone to look at the second last page of the report itself. So there's a chart there that talks about the funding category, the current state, option one, option two.
Yes.
So in this chart, you'll see that the total at the bottom totals four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Currently, we're seeing these numbers. So this is where, take a look at row four, existing annual and multi-year funding agreements and legacy funding agreements. Currently, we're looking at a hundred and ninety thousand. In option one, that funding would move over in its entirety to a new standalone program, operating and major grants program. In option two, one hundred and twenty thousand of that one hundred and ninety would be moved into new stream, arts and operating major project grants. The remainder of that seventy thousand would be moved a few rows down, new stream, community operating and major projects grant. Now with all of this, this is where council has the opportunity to say, okay, typically we've seen let's say six requests for multi-year funding, annual funding. We decide this in November of twenty twenty four. Knowing that, so if, if those total requests exceed one hundred and ninety thousand for annual and multi-year funding, council is in a position to decide, do we maintain the other funding amounts in the arts project based grants, community project based grants and micro grant program? Do we maintain that? And therefore need to find new funding sources for this increased support? Or do we offset those additional agreements that have been set by lowering the total funding available in those project based grant programs? So it's, it's an opportunity to maintain the total funding envelope the same and reallocate amongst the different programs. Or based on the need, if warranted, increase the total funding available.
Okay, so then that gives us a little bit more flexibility from year to year as well, based on budget and stuff. Perfect. Thank you. That makes it much more clear to me. And that is all my questions for now. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you. I think it's important to have a, have a good discussion on, on an item like this that, you know, that needs the input and, and needs the feedback. So just a comment from me and then councillor Barnhart, you'll be up next. I'm just gonna sneak in as we do the transitions here. What I saw with this is a, is a, it's transition plan. There's a transition plan in front of us and I just wanna highlight that, right? You know, there, there's the anticipated items for twenty twenty three. And then say the expression of interest due by this date to trip into the, the program from there, right? So if things were missed in this transition plan, plan that anyone who was watching or reviewing this later, you know, from any of the groups, you know, reach out and, and let us know, right? Like the spirit of the, the spirit of this document is improvement. And that's what we're trying to do right now is streamline that process as we move from one to the next. So councillor Barnhart, we'll move over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much, Ms. Mancher. I expect great things from you and you always deliver. This was a, this was a tough one. Very, very thorough and I really do appreciate the information. First, the first question I want to ask, from your perspective, having seen it, I, I know you were looking at it mostly from an administrative and financial perspective. But you've seen lots here and, and you've, you've worked with so many people. What, what are the benefits to the community of having this kind of a program? Like what, what have you seen? And I, and I know that's not what the report was about, but to councillor Van Newkirk's opening statement. So I think that's why we created this program. So what have you seen?
Thank you very much councillor Barnhart. That's an excellent question. Before I respond, I, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, Chair, for highlighting the fact that there is a transition plan and that there will be a communication plan. And this is not meant to be anything that would surprise any applicant existing or potential. Which then leads into what the benefit of this is to our community. And I think at the heart of this is the community grant program existed. And then the new arts grant program came into existence. And it was really exciting. It was an opportunity to get hands into the, get money into the hands of the groups that were on the ground creating and doing. And that's worked. And then from an administrative standpoint, we're like, hmm, okay, we, we see a few things here that could, you know, need some adjustment. Both from, you know, an efficiency standpoint, which then ultimately benefits the residents, because anything that's done more efficiently from an administrative standpoint allows more administrative time to be directed towards other initiatives, advancing initiatives by our community. The second component of this is recognizing that the community of Beaumont is growing and evolving. The only thing constant is change. And that's a really exciting time. We are seeing tremendous you know, engagement by community members. There's lots of people with wonderful ideas. They want to see their, you know, their passions realized. And they all have, the ideas that we're seeing brought forward are with the intention of making the community more vibrant and livable and connected. And what this potential change does is allows for a framework for a continuous evolution of responding to the needs of the community members. Administration arrived at these two options by feedback from the community. Ultimately, this is, community feedback was the impetus for starting this whole review process in the first place. You know, we're recognizing that community groups that have well established initiatives and events, they're saying, okay, what we're doing has evolved and changed. Our volunteer base is different. The people we're attracting to our event is different. The numbers of the people attending is different. And this provides a mechanism to evaluate that, to celebrate the growth and the changes, and also recognize and provide a venue to encourage new initiatives from residents within Beaumont.
Few more?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Good answer to that question. I, I might have missed it. I don't know if councillor McCook asked this question and I didn't hear it, but funding that we had for special events, is that here or is that somewhere else? So city, city events?
Thank you. That is an excellent question through the chair to councillor Barnhart. The funding for civic community events is in a separate line item. Spoiler alert, because it's all kind of the same area. I'm cognizant about the conversations that have been happening in terms of, you know, how do we respond to, you know, looking at the types of events that we do and the diversity of events and the diversity of programming within our events? And administration believes that making some adjustments to our current framework would open the door to being more responsive to adapting to some of these needs and changes that are coming. And what we'd what I think is recognized in council strategic plan is an engaged vibrant community. So this is providing a mechanism for those people who have ideas for new events to have a, a mechanism to try out something new. And then once it becomes a more established event, there's a path forward to seeking out longer term funding. It also provides an opportunity for groups to reevaluate their existing programming and look at, you know, revamping where their strategic direction is taking them and reevaluate the needs and how they can approach the city to partner and ultimately work together.
Two or three more? They're short.
We're here.
That's why we're here. Is, is there an area that you've seen is not as well, I shouldn't say not as well funded? Have we not received applications from any particular area that you would have thought we might have? I, I mean, I, it's kind of a loaded question because I found one, but have you seen any that you?
Again, if you visit the city of Beaumont website and look at the number of organizations within our community and as evident by attachment three, part one and two, there's consistent consistent applications by there's consistent, uh, consistent applications by, by certain groups. From an administrative standpoint, in terms of, you know, improving processes, one of those is promotion that these programs exist. And I think, you know, promoting the fact that these grant programs exist, providing the supports to the groups to, it can be quite daunting to think about submitting a grant application for the first time. So, um, maybe there'll be future requests for additional support to support the groups in the work that they're doing. Um,
Yeah, okay. Let me just pick up on that.
Loaded question acknowledged.
The, uh, the area of social services, I, I realize that that means different things to different people. And, and I'm not talking about FCSS grants cuz those are preventive and they meet different rules altogether. I think the total was somewhere in the order of thirty, thirty-two thousand for social services compared to maybe sixty thousand of grants for recreation or, or some other category. Um, even given our grant levels, I guess if we stayed at the same, that would mean cut, taking away from others, but uh, have, have you, we haven't, I don't recall turning away people that have asked for it. It's just they're not coming for that funding? Is that, is that what you see?
Good question. It, again, it's a complicated answer. We find that when the uh, grant applic- the project-based grant applications are being reviewed by committee members. Um, and, and this has been, uh, a- again, it's part of that engagement process with the applicants, with the grant committee members who are reviewing applications that there has been a range in, uh, content and information provided in those grant applications. So there have been times that applications have not been awarded funding at all, or they haven't been, they've only been awarded partial funding. Um, and the interesting part is anytime there's a committee of people evaluating the applications, the evaluation will always, that exact evaluation will never be able to be replicated. Because the considerations that are being reviewed by that committee, those exact committee members, those committee members change. The other forces and other considerations that are taking place within the community at that time will also change. So six months down the road, when it's intake two, it's a different set of applicants. Applications are reviewed as a standalone merit of their own project. They're also reviewed in context of the other applications that are coming in. Um, and I guess what I would say to that is this is an opportunity for council to see if there are certain priorities from your own strategic plan that would, you know, warrant some additional attention through the community grant program or the arts grant program. Um, again, you know, there could, there are examples of mechanisms to provide bonus points for applications that meet certain outcomes. So what are those outcomes that we're targeting? You know, are we targeting engagement of certain populations that are traditionally underrepresented? Or are we targeting, um, repres- activities and initiatives that focus on the environment? Or so there's opportunities to go, okay, council has not seen the applications or the projects or initiatives that we've, you know, we're hearing about within the community. So how do we set up a, a mechanism to encourage residents to come forward?
So what I hear you saying is the community grant is open enough, open enough to allow for what's the current priorities within our community to come forward? May- maybe we haven't en- encouraged it as much in certain areas, but it's, they can come through that way.
Certainly. And again, as part of looking at the application form criteria evaluation mechanism, that can always evolve and change and we can open things up wider, put different parameters on what it is.
Yeah, it's not blocking it now is what I, what I wanted to, very quickly, uh, the operating and major is ten thousand plus. Could there not be an operating grant though, if it was, well, if it was, let's say for five thousand a year was what the group was hoping for? That's still an operating grant. But it would then fall to another place. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's an excellent question. Anything that would be deemed operating, so sort of supporting those regular ongoing operations, that would be considered regardless of dollar amount. The major project would be something where currently, the community grant program is limited to a ten thousand dollar maximum. So this is where that major project, you know, where it is a, the project itself would require multiple phases or a commitment knowing that, you know, phase one would lead to phase two, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, that's where that major project and again, it could include something like a capital investment. Uh, whereas currently, the community grant program, that's not the intention behind the community grant program. So it provides a mechanism for groups to come forward and say, you know, we need some serious investment and support by the, the city to realize something. And, and this is why we believe it, it's warranted for that support.
Answered all my questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, one other thing I would say, um, just, uh, in response to the question you asked, Counselor Barnhart, is, you know, the feedback that we've continually all received is that the actual intake form is a barrier. Um, you know, the, for the community grant funding and that, that was consistent with the feedback received is that, you know, the, the intake form for the community grant funding process was daunting and, you know, that in itself may have been a, a barrier to people applying, right? So, um, that was there. Uh, Justice Monkoff Swain, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, good, good report and, and lots of questions already answered. Um, uh, so I'll, I'll be brief here. Um, I, I think it's been talked about the timeline, you know, th- that's the number one thing that I missed the deadline. How do I get, how do I get involved in the process? Or, um, that, that's the key for me is just to make sure that we're, we're flexible. Um, but the, the biggest thing, you know, you, you pointed out the difference between one and two is how much council's involvement, right? Fundamentally, it comes down to that. And where my head is at is, you know, I, I think, you know, the, the less involvement from council, the, the better. Um, I just think we set the direction, we rely on the committees. Um, always found it awkward when, you know, the committee goes away and does all the good work that they do, they evaluate, and then we sit up here and, and kind of grill them, uh, kind of undermines them, uh, and, and their approach. So, um, I, I historically have just taken an approach of, you know, we, we ask this committee to do the work, they're putting in their time. Um, so let's go. So, um, that, that's just where I lean, um, with regards to, to the options. And I'll say I'm surprised that administration slightly recommended the first one. Uh, maybe you're trying to lead us, but um, yeah, I, for, for me, I, I, I'm okay either way. I think this is a, to Steve's point, a good next step, um, a good, uh, evolution of where we're at. Um, but if, if it was up to me, the, the less involvement, the better. Let the folks who wanna do the work, do the work. Um, and then we just need to sit back on an annual basis and take a look and make sure we got the budget in the right place. So, um, that, that's all from me, Steve. Thanks.
Sounds good. Yeah, no, thank you for that. And, uh, I think I've been either before or right after you, every time we've said that is, you know, you put together a committee for all the right reasons. So, yeah. Mayor, you're up.
Hey, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. Great report, good information. Uh, most of my questions were answered and one were formed, so I won't do anything to that. But one question I will, you made an earlier point, it's very important that this whole process began with community. They came to us with the concerns from the user groups, applicants, saying the process, uh, has some gaps in the process, needs to be fixed. And this whole process began from community feedback, which is an important thing to acknowledge. Um, and sometimes when things change, people who wanna change don't like what the end result's gonna be, and that can sometimes happen. At least it's my one question. Um, I understand the options one and two and the benefits of the whole process. Tell me from your perception or your, our perspective perhaps, what are the downsides of option one or option two for the user groups, for council, administration? Um, change always has a lot of good things to it, but I'm not really reading from the report any significant suggestions of option one has one significant downside or option two is one or more. Your perception on the, or your perspective on potential downsides of option one or two? As best you can.
Yes. Through the chair to, uh, Mayor Danilak. Excellent question, um, and very timely, perhaps after, uh, Counselor Monkoff Swain's comment. Uh, at this time, administration is cognizant that there have been, uh, changes to uh, the committees and there are forthcoming changes to some of the bylaws and processes that will be taken forward. And I believe it's next week that, um, Ms. Bajia will be bringing forward an update and sort of next steps with some of those committees. Um, so bearing that in mind, option one would be perhaps perceived by the community as less change, in the sense that council would be reviewing requests for annual funding and major project grants i- in a similar, but perhaps, uh, more formalized way. Uh, whereas option two, taking that intense review directly between council and a nonprofit organization and putting that to a committee, that would perhaps be perceived as more of a change. Um, in terms of other downsides, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe that, you know, any change can, can be difficult and can also bring forward, um, unanticipated outcomes or complications. Um, and I, I think it's important to note that administration would endeavor to, again, review, you know, as, as an evolution takes place, reviewing how all of that is working and where there's opportunity to revise and continue to evolve the, the grant funding framework.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I do appreciate previous council members' comments about maybe having less council involvement is a good thing. In some ways, I believe it is. At the same time, this is almost half million dollars of taxpayer money that we are ultimately responsible for. No matter how, end of the day, the buck does stop at this table. And I think we have, I'm struggling sometimes with the idea of, I see option one benefits, I see option two as well too. So I'm trying to finally, in my mind, what's the higher priority? Community involvement, like committees, committees do their work, or ultimate responsibility falls on us and that, that becomes more option one. So I'm kind of, the report does help me a lot, thinking about the two options. Still working in my mind which way the, to go, but, uh, I do appreciate the, the, the attempted an honest answer on the downside because everything's always got a downside. Sometimes very little, sometimes a lot, depends on, on the situation. So I do appreciate your, your answer to that. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, uh, the answer brings forward a question for myself around, um, so in option two, just for clarity, when we talk about, you know, the arts asks would be um, looked at by an arts jury and, you know, you're just trying to match the, the people who know to the decision, right? Um, does that mean we're looking for a new pool, pool of volunteers? Um, and, or is it a transition from current volunteers over? Like, what does that look like and how does administration see that? And the reason I ask that is because volunteer pools are diminishing, um, and, you know, the volunteers we have are doing good work in their current committees. But, um, you know, with, with the change piece in mind, I'm just trying to be mindful of that. So could you just clarify, are we looking for more volunteers or is this all about transitioning current volunteers into a couple of, uh, specific buckets to evaluate those asks?
Mm-hmm. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Don't wanna let the cat out of the bag, so I, I believe some of the comments, I, there are forthcoming changes to a number of the committees and there's always annual recruitment for new committee members. Um, in line with the comment and question by Mayor Danilak regarding potential downside, um, again, it is one opportunity to recognize that our organizations are facing volunteer burnout and option one would provide a level of uh, assurance that this transition would be perhaps more smooth. Uh, it does not preclude a future revision once things are more established to say, okay, this has now been running X number of years quite well. The committee's Arts Council Grant Funding Advisory Committee, in whichever format those, those committees exist in, we can see that um, delegating that review to those groups would be appropriate. It also does not preclude the opportunity to identify a need to recruit separate volunteers for those explicit purposes. Um, at this time, the recommendation would be to delegate that authority to existing committees.
Yeah, so essentially, option one could be the first step down the road and option two could be the next step down the road, right? Like the options, if we, if the consensus in, uh, was option one, that doesn't preclude option two down the road, right? And, and I think that's, that's the connection I just made here in, as you stated that answer. So, um, uh, Councilor Barnhart.
That, thank you. And I'm trying to clarify that, that point in my head as well to see if I've, I've got it. I'm leaning towards option one and, and what I see the difference being is that the proponents for the operating and major grants would come directly to council, not to the committee. And so council will have that, uh, direct line of sight to who's getting the large amounts of money from, uh, from taxpayers. Um, that feels a little, a little safer right now. But I'm, you know, with Counselor Monkoff Swain, that, you know, the ultimate goal I would like to see is more community control of that. But I don't think we've got all the ins and outs of that to the place where I feel comfortable yet. I, I certainly do for the juried part and for the way it's going now. And I, I, I've been involved in the arts grants and I really feel that that's going much better than it had been going. So I'm leaning towards option one in that transitional time for that reason.
Yeah, thank you. Um, couldn't have said that better. That's kind of where my head's at right now. Councilor Monkoff Swain.
Thanks. Yeah, uh, ma- maybe I'll take us all the way back, uh, to, to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when we, we just had groups in front of us pleading with council. And if you came in January, February, you got a yes. Um, and if you waited till October, there wasn't enough money, so you got a no. And, and, you know, at that point, I, I was just voting no out of principle or everything. And, um, you know, there, I, I recall, there were two, uh, phenomenal young women trying to go out to Quebec uh, for a trip and everyone voted yes for it. And I had to apologize to them when I say, I'm voting no just for the principle reasons. They didn't care about my principles, but they got the money anyway. We, we needed a structure behind it, right? We didn't want these people to come in front of us and, and argue their case. And like, that, this is a, a decision ultimately that, that council is gonna determine or where we put the, put the, put the, these important funds. And at, I feel that we do that at budget time. That's our time to go through and do it. We allocate where we wanna do that. I, I don't think it's necessarily my role to talk about whether it should, we should, it should more should go to the Blues and Roots or more should go over here. And so that, that, that's just, just my concern. And, and maybe that's too aggressive a step early on. I just think where we wanna be is that there is, we allocate the budget and we, we get out of the, the weeds of the, I'll say, local politics of some of these key events, right? Um, so, and, and maybe that's too altruistic for, for now. Uh, I, I'm just sharing my perspective. That's where I think we should be. Maybe we're not there yet, but um, yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing from folks is a little more comfort with one and then maybe we'll see, see where that leads. And, and it does take some pressure off the, the volunteers who are obviously, um, you know, asking a lot, to, to do a lot. So I just wanna share my perspective, ha- happy to lose on this one. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll see where it goes. Thanks.
Um, my request to speak list is clear right now. So, um, just one more question for myself. And then, uh, we'll look for a little bit of consensus here and, uh, see if administration has some, can lean some direction. Um, if this is a little bit, uh, back to the beginning, but if we were to do a report card on groups keeping up on their end with reporting and commitments, how were groups generally doing? Like, what did that look like? Did administration have to, have to poke and remind groups to do their reporting or was the reporting kind of coming in as expected? Uh, and I know there was requirements to do reporting before you got the last of your money and stuff, but even still, like, um, you know, some groups, I kind of heard through the grapevine were delayed, 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 delayed on their money because they didn't have the horsepower to get the reporting done, to grab the last piece of the fund. So what, what, what did that look like? If we were to do a report card, what's that look like?
Yes, that is a very good question. Um, I think it would, uh, look like a typical report card. You're gonna, for, for a class. You know, you're gonna have your stellar students that are on it, projects done. A week later, they've got that report in. They're getting their twenty percent remaining funds. And then you've got organizations that and I'll say, you know, sometimes for very good reason, are delayed in their funding, uh, reports. Um, I do think, again, that is looking, there, there have been some changes that have already taken place in terms of the final report for the community grant funding program. Um, and one of the simple questions is saying, did your project proceed as planned or were there massive changes? Yes or no? And if it went as planned, we, we don't need you to rehash what you wrote in. We we can't, we don't need you to rehash what you wrote in your in your initial report. So. There have been some adjustments from an administrative standpoint to try to ease the burden on that. I can appreciate the uh. The administrative burden that that really is. Uh however, administration recognizes that there's a certain level of. Accountability that comes with some of these. Perhaps perceived daunting requirements to ensure that. Taxpayer dollars have been used appropriately, efficiently. There hasn't been waste. There hasn't been misuse of funds. And I think one thing that I'm particularly looking forward to is through. Improving the reporting mechanism is actually celebrating the great work that is being done by our community. I I think that's one area. There's an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the outcomes that have happened from the reporting, so. Administration. Is confident that. Again, it it will be tough to strike the balance of accountability and transparency with. Easing as much administrative requirements as possible, but recognizing that there is a a need to maintain that.
Yeah. That sounds good. Uh Mayor, pop up for a final, final thought.
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate the latitude and that. Just one final comment. I was remiss in not thanking you and congratulating you on the micro grant. Idea. I think it's very creative and it's going to fill a bit of a void and and some expediencing of some of the smaller groups like the block party people. Um that kind of thing, that's it's. It does go to uh stage four or pardon, part four of you mentioned. Uh Mr. Chair about the community thing. That's exactly what's going to do and it's a very creative idea. Congratulations on that and I think it's going to be very successful. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the latitude.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Uh I invented a word. I called it neighborliness. You know, neighborliness dial is cranking up and the local camaraderie is. Just something that'll, I think, be able to be celebrated uh through that microgram process. Now, I will also point out that. Um in order to create the microgram program, there was a a sucking of ten thousand dollars out of two columns to make the four oh sevens match on the bottom. We want to have that discussion. We'll have it at that budget um around that. So um so the consensus I'm seeing around the room is. Uh some comfort with the recommendation around option one. Uh but I would point out to just a committee that, you know, when this does come back, there's, you know, in council, we can still. You know, shuffle around bullet points if we wanted to or or reserve the right to change our minds. So. But uh yeah, just looking for a motion to be put up um regarding uh referring this recommendation on this item to council, please. I'll see if any committee member is willing to move that. There, we see one, just have a have a review of that motion and see if anyone is willing to move that motion, uh Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm willing to move that option one. As set out in September nineteen twenty twenty three, committee of the whole report, grant program review be approved. Thank you.
Sounds good and uh vote on that one, please. Need discussion. Make your. Uh it's sorry, I I didn't see any more discussion on there, so I switched over to the voting page, so. And there we go, that passes. Thank you. Yeah, five, five oh. No one's on the losing side of that one tonight, so we're good. Um so just being cautious in the time, we're sitting at six seventeen. We do have a break at six thirty, but I think it would be um. Prudent to start in on item four point two, Curtis. Uh if you can find a. Natural break somewhere in there. Um I'll just let you kind of, whoa, sorry. Talking with my hands here. I'll let you kind of just watch the clock and see if you find that break and and if you're not done presenting by the time that break happens, that's okay. We'll just kind of resume there, so. Um yeah, with that, I'd like to introduce the the second quarterly financial report and uh turn the mic over to Mr. DeBlanco.
Thank you. Uh good evening to the committee. As mentioned, I'm Curtis DeBlanco. I'm the Director of Finance. Uh before committee this evening is an informational report to serve as a mid-year financial update on the city's twenty twenty three municipal utility and capital budgets. Um I'll direct committee's attention to page two of attachment one, as the committee is aware, council approved a four point nine percent tax levy increase for the twenty twenty three year. Um and this provides twenty five million approximately in taxation revenue to fund municipal operations. Uh the city also utilizes other other revenue streams. They're listed on on that attachment there under the revenue section. Those include sales, user charges, government transfers and rental fees, among other things. So overall on revenue, based on the forecast provided by departments in July, administration is expecting to see a shortfall of approximately two hundred and fifty eight thousand. Overall on revenue. This net shortfall is attributable to to numerous areas, but notably licenses, permits and fines and franchise fees. Uh these amounts are offset by additional investment income partially as well as rental revenue. Uh one item mentioned was was franchise fees. The city's franchise fees budget is actually set based on forecasts. Provided by the franchise utility providers. At mid-year, the monthly revenue for this was trending approximately two percent below budget and um just for the committee's uh benefit, the budget is set. Based on forecast provided by the city's franchisees for both power and natural gas. Uh next, looking to the middle section there, which is operating expenses still on page two of the of attachment. Uh the city is forecasting to spend very, very close to the budgeted operating expenses of fifty two million. Um we see on the bottom there only a a net variance of uh sixty eight hundred dollars. That being said, there are some large variances at the department level. Uh and we see some underspends both in finance of. Uh half a million dollars in the C O office of point three million. Um these underspends pertain in particular to uh some one-time projects that the funding would. Will be requested to be shifted just based on timing of startup and implementation of those projects. Notably, the financial ERP system and implementation of the Service Experience Office or S E O. Um once again, I indicated these both are funded from reserves. Uh the underspends don't actually contribute to the overall net budget deficit. Um and these amounts are expected to be required, requested rather, as carried forward into twenty twenty four. Um some other items that we can look at are, we see an overage on operating expenses on the recreation line item of approximately. Uh point four million dollars. This, the main driver for this one is really uh casual labor that's been required for staffing at BSRC. Particularly in the pool. We've seen increased usage at the aquatic center. And additional staff has been required to support this demand. Additional revenue from this additional usage does offset a a partially these amounts. Overall, the department forecasted a net deficit of uh point one million. Uh looking at infrastructure, uh there's been a forecast to be approximately point two million over on operating expenses. Um amongst uh the hot topic of inflation, these additional forecasted overages are are being driven from. Um escalating repairs and maintenance on fleet and equipment, uh fuel as well as facility maintenance expenses. Uh that net bottom section for the operating budget is transfers. Uh included in the municipal operating budget are transfers. Um both from and to reserves. The transfers from reserves are typically to fund one-time operating projects that we mentioned uh before. Uh the stage and the amount of work completed at year end will ultimately determine the amount that gets transferred from those reserves. They offset the expenditures for those one-time projects. Um administration expects to draw one point five million from operating reserves. And then in turn contribute three point six billion to its capital reserves. Um on the net level, net transfers contribute uh point two million or two hundred thousand towards the operating deficit. So in summary, on the municipal operating budget, there we see that revenue shortfall of approximately point three million. Essentially no difference on expenses and then a net transfer difference of uh two hundred thousand. This overall, when some total represents a forecasted deficit of approximately four hundred and sixty six thousand. Um of committee, draw their attention to the next page, which is page three, which is the utility operating budget. Uh overall, utility revenue is forecasted to be uh hundred and twenty thousand above budget and reflective of the expectations that. Uh were set forth at the time of budget approval, including setting utility rates. We see a one percent additional revenue from development and other levies and on the expense side, we see uh additional personnel costs that have. Contributed to uh approximately a hundred thousand overspend overall on operating expenses. These do net net out uh and then after included in this amount or sorry. These do net out and we do see a very small surplus of five hundred thousand over the budgeted transfer of one point three million. Um this budgeted transfer one point three million is. Just what I indicated before with the operating budget. This is to the capital um reserve for utility, once again, to fund the renewal of utility infrastructure. Uh you, similar to the municipal operating budget, administration will recommend that any surplus or deficit be either transferred to or drawn from the utility reserve. So next, page four, which is uh the city's capital budget. So as of June thirtieth, uh nineteen percent of the approved capital budget had been spent. Um this excludes the the Beaumont Innovation Park line item. We'll discuss that in a second here. Um and it is expected that ninety five percent of the capital budget will be have spent by the end of the year. And for certain projects not completed at year end. As part of its annual process, administration is likely to request that these budget funds be carried forward to twenty twenty four to complete these projects. Draw committee's attention to the renewal section, which on the on the page is the middle section. The majority of the renewal programs that were included in the capital budget are expected to utilize all budgeted funds and to complete the work forecasted. Um we do see one overspend on the. Sorry, bear with me. Fleet and equipment replacement program of approximately three hundred and eighty five thousand. What this is is just a timing difference. Um I'll spare committee the. Ins and outs of accounting, but it's really, we have a an underspend in the prior year and an overspend in the current year. And all that is is reflecting that uh we had a little bit of uh. Like I said, a timing difference on what was requested as forward as uh a carry forward in the current year. But effectively, these two variances net out, so. That actual balance would net to zero. Or shockingly close. Um the growth section, which is the top section of the report, uh you'll notice a notable variance on the innovation park. There's been changes in scope and changes to the project, so what will likely occur is that that project go away and then a new fully scoped project for twenty twenty four will come out. Um the funding for this particular one actually was from from debt and government transfers. Both of those funding sources will just go back into the pool and in the case of debt not be utilized. Um excluding the variance on this, the city is forecasted to see a savings of. About nine hundred thousand on these growth projects. Uh the most notable savings is is for rink shacks, which uh committee is aware that was um. Cancelled for the year as well as savings on the Russo school site. Um there are some utility and offsite levy projects in the bottom sections. Almost all those projects are expected to be completed within budgets uh in the year. As you can see, the variance is very, very small on most of them. Um next section of the attachment is on the city's reserves. Uh as indicated previously, uh the municipal operating budget will require reserve draw of one point five million uh and. Point three million in the utility operating budget. Uh this is actually three, point three million less than what was approved. Uh for capital, five point five of the five point six million uh. Is expected to be spent to uh fund the. City's. Uh capital renewal projects and. In the case of underspends on draws from reserves, particularly on these renewal projects. The practice is to leave those funds remaining in the reserves to fund future uh capital replacement renewal. Um looking at the far right-hand column, we have some indicators on optimal balance for each of the reserves. We see two instances where the balance is below the optimal balance guidelines, notably the financial stabilization reserve. Um that was affected by the the deficit in the past year, in the twenty twenty two year. Which was uh it was needed to be drawn upon to offset that point nine million dollar deficit. As part of the upcoming budget process, administration will recommend likely an increased allocation to this reserve to offset that. Or reallocation between the reserve balances themselves to bring them all within optimal level. Finally, in conclusion, it's administration's intent to reduce the deficit that we saw in the municipal operating budget as best as possible while still maintaining service. The way we do that is to increase focus on operational expenditures, finding internal efficiencies and hopefully not requiring this reserve draw at year end. Uh this concludes my report for this evening. Uh I'll be happy to turn it over to committee for questions and discussion.
Sounds good. Just uh looking to administration to see about a break at six thirty, if that's still the timing or if we should. That's still timing, so probably what we'll do now is we'll uh I'll call a break here and we'll reconvene at. I don't know, let's say, let's say fifteen minutes, let's say six forty five. Uh thank you all. There. Thank you to administration for getting us back live here. Uh part two of the September nineteenth, uh committee of the whole meeting is now underway. Um we just finished a presentation from Mr. DeBlanco on section four point two in the second quarterly financial report. And uh I'll ask administration if you could cast those um pages up on the screen here for reference. Uh just anticipating maybe committee members might have questions on that. And at this point, I'll uh open the floor to committee members. If you have any questions on uh section four point two here. For Mr. Blink, for for Mr. DeBlanco, thank you. Council Mokov Swain, you're up.
Yeah, more more of a comment than anything. Um. And just a recognition of, you know, a lot of the challenges that you and your department have have faced, juggling. Um you touched on inflation very briefly there, but we know what what the challenges that that's brought. Generally to everyone, but specifically in um, you know, the the city here. Um you know, I'll reflect back. Historically, you know, I I'd seen, you know, surpluses around the two million dollar mark and that that scared me. Um I'm like, how are we? Uh and this is before your time, I should say, and before the majority of your team's time. Let me put that on the record. Um but. N- now we're we're getting very tight, right? And this also makes me nervous. So you're doing too good of a job, I I think is uh i- is the the. Concerns too too strong a word, but um recognizing that this is just halfway through and we're trending and you're giving us the information that we're looking at, so. Um I think more just a recognition of. Um of of the the multiple challenges that you're facing and and this report really helps me. Um and and your your verbal update really helps me answer a lot of questions. Um that that's starting to come with with the pressures that some of our residents are are facing. Obviously, four point nine percent last year. Um you know, mu- much higher than than everyone wanted. Um but but, you know, necessary for all the reasons and so I I think these these quarterly reports. Um just really helpful for me in communicating with folks, so so thanks for taking the time to put it together. Um the one thing I'd like to get a better sense of. I'm not going to ask you uh on the spot here, but um. We, in the budget, we we approved X amount of F T Es. Um and. How long that takes them to come on board, you know, that that process, particularly because we delayed this this year, right? So there is challenges there. Just just moving forward, some some feedback is. You know, we we approved, what, three or four positions for planning? How are we doing with that? Have we got them in? Um you know, we. We we're assuming X amount of uh expense for that, right? But if they're not coming on till October, what are we doing with that nine months, right? It's just. I'd just like to know a bit more around around those things, because everything else is is much more manageable and predictable, but some of the hires that that come in later on. Where we've uh we've allocated a a full year budget for it, so. I don't know if you've got any comments on that. I won't ask you specifics on where we're at, because that's unfair on the spot, but just moving forward. Um I'd really like to see that, um you know, that that F T U kind of count and it doesn't need to be per position, but. You know, when do we get them in and and how are we trending from from that perspective? So I'll I'll leave that with you. Thanks.
Yeah, if you have any comments, uh feel free. If if not, then.
Uh yeah, I'll just have one comment just on overall, when we're talking about um staffing in general, uh just a. It it isn't mentioned in the report, but it does get mentioned in our budget that one of the techniques um administration uses to keep that. Turnover surplus, we'll call it, those those times in the year where staffing's vacant. Uh we we have a a technique in our budget that we call salary discount, so we actually discount our overall salary portfolio or personnel portfolio in the budget by three percent. And what that does is reflect that there are. And what that does is reflect that there are times in the year where, you know, there are vacancies and that that funding isn't getting utilized, so it's it's actually. We're we're funding our personnel por- uh portfolio as indicated in the budget at about ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, really helpful, uh, and and I think, you know, that the concern here. Um, and it's not a strong one, but the the general concern is that, you know, are we are we overtaxing folks to better pay for people who are there in time, right? And so even that little bit of information, super helpful, um, really helpful, uh, and so, yeah, I just. If if there are ways to to communicate. How that process works through these quarterly updates would would help for the the two other people outside of in this room who look at it, but. Um, yeah, I just just some feedback for for future, but that that three percent piece makes a lot of sense, and. Again, we know you guys are on this, um, just arm us with the information so we can we can back up. Thank you. Thanks.
Sounds good. Any other committee members wish to speak on this subject or or we we can move on to let me know. Okay, um, yes, seeing no more comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. DeBlanco, for uh solid delivery and uh some succinct words to go along with the numbers. Thank you. Now, now, at this point, we'll move on to section four point three, uh, the Protective Services Second Quarter Report and uh. Invite our our presenters forward. And your mic is on. And the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of uh council, um. For members of the public, uh, Chief Jay Melvin, um, Director of Protective Services. With me this evening is Corporal Hack, uh. Acting Staff Sergeant for the Beaumont Detachment. And we're here this evening uh to present uh second quarter statistical report for Protective Services. And um, Corporal Hack's gonna uh present first quarter, which is the same time period, it's just that they operate on a fiscal year and we operate on a calendar year, so. Um, we'll go through the uh the slideshow. If there's questions that you have, uh, you can easily uh raise uh. Um, questions at that point, or we can wait till both of our presentations are done. Um, we'll just see how the uh uh the flow of the presentation goes. So second quarter uh report for Protective Services, we'll start off with Fire Service. Um, we have seen a decrease uh in both fire and medical uh calls compared to last year. This is uh. Um, this is beneficial for uh for us and our membership, uh, and um. Um, this would still seem to be, um, I wouldn't say an anomaly, it's just how the flow of the uh this year has gone. Um, decrease in fire calls um is is beneficial in one month, and then you see an increase in another month. Uh, so it kind of fluctuates depending on what's happening during the year. Uh, for medical calls, you can still see that um we're probably on average for those sturdy calls. Um, every uh every month. Uh, like I said, may have dropped down a bit, but uh, once again, back up in June and it. Uh, you'll see as we get into Q three, it'll fluctuate uh once again. Now, one of the points that we take out of that was brought up from our our last meeting, well, what does this call volume look like compared to? Uh, the full-time staff that cover the calls Monday to Friday for first truck out response uh compared to after hours and weekends. Uh, so for those, uh, you can see that during the second quarter, uh, sixty-four percent of the call volume is covered by our volunteer membership. Uh, that is after four thirty uh every day and on the weekends and on holidays. And fifty-one percent uh when it comes to medical calls, so overall, um, definitely more than half the calls that are um. Are are coming into our uh uh calls for service for both fire related and medical are being covered by uh the volunteer membership. Municipal enforcement, um, municipal enforcement statistics continue to uh. Continue to increase um month over month. Uh, a lot of that is um uh coming from staffing that we're fully staffed and we're able to get out there. Uh, community standards, uh, we can see that we've had an increase of a hundred and twenty-five percent of uh of. Files related to the community standards from last year compared to this year. Some of that is based on um staffing, the other is people are calling in and 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 advising enough a concern that we're that we have to deal with. Animal control, that's a good thing that we're decreasing. Uh, one of the uh concerns with animal control right now is a lot of the. Um. Uh, I guess. Uh, facilities that uh take in our stray uh dogs and cats are not accepting cats, uh, everything is full. Uh, so we're are seeing some challenges that um it's uh becoming difficult to bring uh. Uh, to bring animals um that are in need to uh to the pound per se. Traffic safety, um, that is definitely uh an increase as we've seen uh compared to last year. And uh service calls, uh, one of the thing about service calls is uh, as you've heard me mention before, is those calls that are reactive. Uh, calls for service, somebody calls for the uh through the dispatch line. Uh, or into the office rather than um officer-generated calls. The officer-generated calls uh for this quarter uh compared to last quarter. Uh, and these are officers out in the field and finding issues before uh the public identifies them. Um, overall, in Q two, we've seen uh two hundred and forty officer-generated calls. That's our members out on the uh, out in the cars, driving around a community and identifying those. And uh compared to eighty-five last year, uh, so that's an increase of about a hundred and eighty uh percent uh of officers doing proactive. Um, community policing um for uh for that to identify some of those uh, some of those issues before somebody calls into the center. So that is a, that is a positive thing that uh we see when our 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 members are out in the community. And uh, and uh trying to address those issues uh before they uh before they become a problem for residents and uh. And obviously for concerns coming in through uh through your channels. Uh, provincial uh and municipal warnings and uh violations uh issued by municipal enforcement. Um, you can see overall, the the plan is to still to provide that provide that education piece. When it comes to uh provincial warnings, uh, you can see an increase from last year to this year. Once again, that is, a lot of that is related to staffing and how many members have been out on the road. Uh, last year compared to this year, this year we're fully staffed, last year during this time period we were not. Uh, provincial violations, um, same thing, uh, you can see where we're uh where we're situated uh for uh for those. Um, municipal warnings um and violations, a lot of those are, as you start to look into April and May, June. Are either street sweeping or parking issues that we've uh uh faced throughout the year, um, where people are uh. Uh, un-unfortunately not abiding by the rules that the rest of the community are when it comes to um making sure that uh that you're we're we're clear though, so. Uh, overall, um, we are seeing a um uh an increase um. In uh in provincial violations. Overall, um, and uh each quarter kind of fluctuates, but at the same time, we are giving um uh the public that education that hopefully. Will pay dividends in the future and we'll see those numbers uh decrease as we uh continue to move forward and continue to track this on a monthly basis. Automated traffic enforcement, um. Automated traffic enforcement, once again, uh compared to the first quarter, uh, numbers are down once again, uh compared to twenty twenty-two. Um. The, one of the unknowns is, is this, people know where the photo radar vehicles are, or are people actually um. Um, abiding to the rules and and trying to change their driving habits uh a little better. I'm betting hopefully on the culture piece, uh, but I also am not naive to people know that um what a photo radar vehicle looks like. And the province's regulations of us identifying it more uh to let people know that even if the photo re- vehicles there and people are slowing down. That ultimately is achieving the same goal as ever, trying to uh reduce those high-risk areas uh and ensure that people are not uh. Um, running red lights or speeding through school zones and things like that, which would have a detrimental effect on uh on uh those areas, so. Overall, uh, one of the big things is the uh is is decreasing is the non-issued and non-violations. Uh, non-issued, uh, a lot of those are where they're checked internally to uh to verify that. Um, an infraction didn't happen or didn't abide by the rules uh set out by the province, so. That's always a a good to see that uh those non-issued ones are decreasing. Um, and that the um uh the photo radar contractor is doing what they're supposed to be and their data is accurate. So that is quickly uh my report uh when it comes to those. Uh, if there's no immediate questions, we can roll into um the RCMP Q uh one report, and I'll turn that over to uh. Uh, Corporal Hack, she can operate the uh fancy button. Yeah, you betcha.
Okay. I am Corporal Andrea Heck with the Beaumont Detachment, and I put together a quick slideshow for our first quarter, April, May, June. Uh, our annual performance plan for the Beaumont Detachment. Uh, the three priorities that we have on it are crimes against persons, traffic safety and crime reduction. So our goal is to reduce those or provide education to the community. Uh, the proactive work that our members have been doing to reach or to help with our A P P. Is offender checks, so everybody who's on curfew or on conditions in our community. This is the amount of times that we've checked them, so April twenty-sixth, May seven and June two. There's variation because people go on and off of conditions, move in and out of town. There's always lots of moving parts to that, uh, traffic stops, so that could be tickets, warnings or education pieces. Uh, our numbers are always pretty high for that, our members are out quite a bit. Um, in their spare time, so April. Uh, May was our highest and June was one forty-five. Uh, so the stats that I pulled together for the first quarter. Our calls for service from April first through June thirtieth of this year, we had eight hundred and seventy-four calls. Uh, broken down into months. Almost three hundred in April, three hundred and five in May and two hundred and seventy-one in June. So I put the numbers from the previous year in brackets, so an increase in every month, not huge. Um. But still an increase. Uh, I put a general breakdown of the files and not all the files. Are accounted for up there because we do assist other agencies and those sort of things are not included, but just so you guys can get a. Like glimpse of what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, and these are like mostly criminal code files that we're dealing with. Uh, we have a lot of theft unders, and when we present for this quarter that we're currently in, you'll see an increase, there's. Been a rash of them lately, um, Mental Health Act, we still deal with that a lot. Uh, assaults and disturbing of the peace. Um, those are our major ones, impaired investigations with the provincial sanctions. We always have quite a few of those. Um, our community engagement that we've been doing for those three months. We have done foot patrols through the Four Seasons Park, it's been a great summer to be outside, so we enjoy that. Uh, positive tickets for the youth. Uh, we were involved in the Beaumont Days Parade, lock it or lose it. Uh, our CPVS member went out with the COPs, the citizens on patrol and checked vehicles to see if they're left unlocked. Hence the increase of vehicles, uh, theft from vehicles. Uh, so it's just education part for the community to try and protect themselves from people who will take advantage of easy targets. Uh, we had our open hosts in June and it was a big success, we had a huge turnout. Uh, CPVS went out for the Hindu Society Mother's Day event. Uh, she's been very involved in the egg. Society and going out there for safety talks and. Being involved whenever they request that. And lots of school talks and daycare visits and presentations uh from our CPVS member, she's very busy. Uh, trying to fulfill all the asks that we are getting from the schools and daycares and the community to provide what they're wanting. Uh, so she is quite busy and does a lot on her own time and rescheduling. But I feel like the schools are satisfied and the daycares and the kids are enjoying coming into our detachment and seeing the police officers. What we have upcoming, uh, license plate safety screws, that actually happened two weekends ago, I think. Uh, coloring contest for the RCMP one fifty. The positive ticket year-end event is coming up on the twenty-ninth, I believe. Uh, and we did an elder abuse presentation at the library. We weren't sure who was all gonna turn up and it was actually well-attended, lots of questions and lots of information given, so that'll be something that we'll do again. Uh, we do have a upcoming domestic violence presentation in November, it's Domestic Violence Month. Um. Awareness Month. And our community advisory committee meetings have resumed, uh, we just had one last Monday and they'll be every two months. For the remainder of the year. Uh, staffing updates for our detachment, uh, we have a new staff sergeant named. Uh, he's coming from down south, he just had to sell his house and buy a house and he'll be here. Uh, we have two corporals, myself and Corporal Assun, we have ten general duty constables right now, CPVS. And GIS, so Constable Global was in that position, he's moved on and we have Constable Wishert who's here and up and running, working. Uh, the two new positions that have been created, um. The first is the corporal and the GIS, this has been posted. And the posting has closed, so now all the applications have gone to staffing to make a choice of who's gonna get that position. Uh, so he will be GIS, so we will have two people that can combat that area, which is very important for our community. Um, and they'll get some good results. And our general duty position. Uh, we have a member named for that and they have to sell their house and buy house. And that's our staffing updates. Question?
Great, yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's always interesting to see what numbers have done, what what's gone up, what's gone down. Um, what effect does a enforceable bylaw have on a pie chart? We learned that tonight, too. Like, the number is one twenty-five percent on the community standards pie chart, so um, just looking to committee members. For their comments and the board is lighting up, Councilor Barnhart, you'll kick us off, thank you.
To quick one, thank you, Chair, and thank you very much. Thanks for the update, always appreciate it when you come and and uh share the perception, like, you know, the big picture with us. Um, something I also uh have done in the past and wonder if you're planning to do it again, and I understand with staff changes that may be difficult. Is uh ride-alongs, offering counsel that opportunity to to just see for themselves kind of what's happening. Uh, from a perspective uh of an RCMP officer, is that allowed anymore? Are you still doing that?
Uh, yeah, so our ride-along program is back up and running, uh, mostly for applicants, but of course, like, there's just. Paperwork to be filled out before each one, so if it is something that interests you, we can definitely set something up and. You know, let you guys see what it's like naming Beaumont, yeah, that was very interesting, thank you.
Yeah, last term, uh, last term, you put in a shift, didn't you? Last term? Yeah, I I put in a shift and uh, yeah, it was quite, it was quite eye-opening. Yes, that's right, yeah. Uh, Councilman Moko Swain, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. First, just on the. Uh, the community outreach, um, just to, you know, clue us to you and the team, it's, and we talked a bit about it uh in in another discussion, but. Um, you know, having you guys out there at the different events, um, you know, it really makes a big difference, right? So, um, that that's usually a lot of the biggest feedback we get, right, on these different events, so. Keep it up and and please pass on to your your team there that it it does make a difference for people seeing it, I mean, I know you know this. Um, but you might not hear it directly, and so just wanted to pass that on. Um, as it relates to priorities. Um, maybe just provide a bit of background around how those three priorities get set.
Uh, mostly through consultation from our town halls, what we bring back from city council. Uh, meetings with Jay and, yeah, uh, district priorities as well, so there's always. Uh, the pressures from what district and the province wants to see too.
Yeah, and where I'm going with this and and recognize the difference pressures from from outside, but, and you know, we have our uh advisory committee and all that sort of stuff, but.
Um.
And you know, we have our uh advisory committee and all that sort of stuff, but um. And you know, earlier on tonight, I was I was trying to get council out of the weeds and some of this sort of stuff, but on this one here. Particularly as we have two new members joining us soon. Like, I think it'd be worth trying to really dive into that and having a more fulsome discussion around it. Cause I just, I just feel when when we have these quarterly updates, I just see, okay, here are the priorities or, you know, decisions being made over here. And I don't feel as I've been involved in it. And then you come back and say, these are priorities and. I mean, who who am I to say, no, they shouldn't be, but I don't know how that process is is come about. So um, you know. Uh, recognizing that you've set the priorities already, um, I I think it would be worth having a discussion with council once we, once we have a full complement. Just to to talk a bit about um, how those come about and 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 take a look at how we could improve on that process to make sure that. Um, you know, the input here is is included, because I mean, you you said, you know, discussions from council, we get that, but. Um, you know, we we hear things at different times, right? And so. Uh, I'd just like to be a bit more involved and I'd like council to be a bit more involved and sit in that that direction. Um, so just just some feedback for for future. Um, yeah, so I'll leave it there and and, you know, I don't think we need any. Formal motion or anything like that. I just some, you know, as we as we get back up, let's. You know, maybe create a session to to provide a bit of awareness for for us up here and how we come about those. So. And obviously with full recognition that you're not just focused on three things, um, but I I understand that. But tha- that's where you're you're putting your your focus on. So um, you know, that's our one thing that we have. And I just feel as though it's, there's no disrespect. I just feel as though it's told to us, told to me anyway. And I don't feel I have much input in that. And so I don't feel as I'm doing my job. So just just some feedback on that. Thank you.
Um, I'll slide one in here and you alluded to a number that's going to get bigger. Uh, that that number is the one, the issue that I hear the most of, the theft unders. Um, and you know, it's at thirty five in this report. And if there are any. Kind of community crime things that are brought to my personal attention, it's that, um, you know, all the time and probably like. You know, you said the number is getting bigger and that's why, um, you know, the cul-de-sac that I live in, we've had, but guys, gals, people, whatever the right term is for. The people doing these things, they walk by everyone's camera on the way in, grab all the doors and walk out. Nothing, nothing doing, not a care in the world. Everybody shares their camera footage and it's like, oh, here they are again. Right? And someone forgot to lock their door. They get a wallet and they go, right, like, um, so I can only imagine how much. And how many times that's happening in the community and that's going to reflect in your next update. So um, yeah. That's really the only comment I I I wanted to make for for myself on this. And otherwise, I I really appreciate the the numbers and the breakdowns and. And I think the comparative to last year's is the perspective that everyone needs all the time on all the different categories. So I I also like that. Um, Mayor Danlock, you're the next one, Lincoln.
I'm Mr. Chair, just a question and a quick comment uh, for the chief, uh, mostly about uh, uh, speed in uh, the school zones. Uh, one thing I hear the most complaints from residents who either use the service portal or simply call me and say, I got, you know, the concern about speeding. Speed is a concern around the whole city. I get that, but I I do think. If we could, I'm not suggesting to instruct you at all by any means, but I'm wondering if we can be more caught in some speeding in our in our school zones. Um, the point where I cross the school from us, I come out of the city hall numerous times a day and I see cars going by way more than thirty. I haven't got a gun in front of me. You can hear the sound of the car. You know, they're going more than thirty. And I can't understand people going more than thirty in a school zone. Uh, I talked to one of our, most officers, he mentioned he he clocks somebody at fifty six. They got a nice big ticket for that, but fifty six in the school zone. I can't get my head around that. I really, really can't. So I'm wondering if we could just through their efforts of enforcement, just be mindful more than we are perhaps sometimes about school zones. I'm I'm asking for any kind of commitment, just a observation that that's one area that I'm really concerned about is the school zones and speeding. I've seen people going way too fast. If you have any comments on that, I I I'd be open to any suggestions you may have.
Uh, through the chair to uh, Mayor Danlock. Uh, this year we did do a communications campaign. Uh, when it comes to school zones and you remember that we've changed school zones to now. Um, playground zones to to do that time period. Um, I know uh, since the beginning of September, our officers at the beginning of every shift, they come in at seven AM. Uh, they're at the school zones within uh, within those time periods. Um, obviously, we can't be in every school zone and all times and we're trying to crack down on. On a lot, but you'll see even in the Q three report, um. Uh, the uh, and I'm sure the RCMP has seen it also, that the uh, um, the rate of speed some people are going. Uh, in the community is is I've seen some that are fifty over the speed limit. And that could be fifty over a hundred or it could be uh, fifty over uh, over the designated speeds in the community. Um, so that's a a culture piece that we're trying to uh, to get on. Um, but our officers are out there doing um. That proactive piece within the school zones, uh, that we're trying to get those areas for people to understand that. Um, it's just not when you don't see kids, right? Just because they're in school, that doesn't mean. Uh, you know, somebody could be late or somebody could be running in front of a vehicle and then um, that's not what nobody wants. So. Uh, I don't know if uh, you have any more comments on what you guys have seen in the school zones or speeding in the community as a whole.
The same thing. Uh, and we try and be out there for the high, like when the kids are out there, but even like. Last week when I was doing the patrols, I got passed, I think we talked about in the community advisory. Uh, meeting on fiftieth, it's like two lanes, but it's really wide. Anyways, I was driving down there and somebody actually passed me on the right. Beating at a crosswalk, like it was everything and they're like, oh, I was in a hurry. I'm like, okay, so. The education piece, like, yeah, we get tickets and stuff, but yeah, it's education and us being out there in the times and but like. It could be any time of day, like that was not even when kids were present that they did it, right? But. It is, it's us being out there and being visible in the community and educating them and ticketing them when they're doing stuff. That's. Like that, yeah.
I appreciate that. I know most people in Beaumont don't speak quite that dramatically in the school zones, but we have got a bit of an issue. I know we're aware of it. Just so it's on the record that we had a conversation about it and residents who do listen at home, we do listen to comm- uh, residents concerns and one of them. A fair one is speeding in school zones. So much appreciate you guys are on top of that. Only comment, Mr. Chair is for the RCMP. And I'm thrilled you're getting inundated with requests for presence at schools and presentations. That's a great thing. Um, I think that goes well. The community. Appreciates the RCMP and the work you're doing and they're not happy. They wouldn't be inviting you to their classrooms and and groups and presentations. So. That's a a good thing in my mind. So I'm glad you swapped those requests. Thank you.
Councilor McCook, you're up.
Thanks, Chair. Um, yeah, just to reiterate uh, some of the points, I think I know protective services as a whole has. Done a great job of really being visible in the community and I think that's really important. Um, the connection obviously pays off. Um, and that's why we continue to be a safe community. Um, so just thanks to each of the divisions for for all of that. That's awesome. Um, I know we spoke about this in in our meeting, but um, perhaps just a. Quick update for counselors here and every, anyone that might be watching, but um, are alcohol in the park? How did that um, kind of go from your guys' perspective?
Through the uh, chair to uh, Councilor McCook, we did not see a. Drastic increase in uh, in um, calls for service uh, for that, for through the municipal enforcement line. Hard to tell if people just didn't call in or or uh, didn't uh, didn't see anything, but we didn't see any. Real big spikes or or concerns that came in that this was an issue. Uh, obviously, the RCMP. Um, uh, handle this stuff twenty four hours a day. So um, I'm not sure. I don't recall in our discussions that. We've seen a real big level of concern from uh, from the uh, from the community, so.
Perfect. Thank you. And then um, quickly in regards to municipal enforcement, how long, and I know this. Diverse from each file, um, but how long does it take to resolve a file? So, you know, for example, one of the new. Parts of the community standards is the bins and stuff with the builders. So um, from, you know, complaint one to to potentially, you know. Um, some fines and stuff, how how long is that process?
Uh, through the chair to uh, Counselor uh, McCook. So soon as we get um. Um, as soon as we get the complaint or the concern, a officer is attached to that file. Um, we will go out and uh, and um, give the uh, complaint and notice that'll be a notice remedy that they'll have. You know, twenty four, forty eight, seventy two hours, depending on uh, depending on how drastic or or what the level of concern is. Um, but soon as that notice to remedy is is issued, and this is a lot for just community standards, not just. Uh, garbage in uh, garbage bins, uh, sorry, construction bins. Um, and then if it's not done, then we, our contractor would then clean it up and then. Uh, it gets invoiced back against the uh, the property owner, whoever is is the owner of that property. So. Um, as long as uh, as long as a file gets attached to the officer in a timely fashion, then. Um, our ultimate goal is try to get back uh, to somebody within uh, half a day. Uh, so if somebody calls in in the morning, we try to get back to them by noon. But once again, that fluctuates depending on how many calls came in over the weekend or over the evening. Or what other higher priorities that may have come up. Um, but every, every call that gets. Uh, into the uh, into the municipal enforcement complaint line is tracked, recorded and put in the records management system. So whenever somebody calls, uh, a file gets actioned on it. And then we can then track and pull stats off if we have either run within the system, the address or. Builder, uh, if they have six or seven properties now that they all have concerns on. Uh, that we can track it in uh, in that aspect with doing a little bit of um, investigation into our records management. That can be done else.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. That's all the questions for me. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no more uh, lights on here from members of committee. Just like to thank you for your presentation tonight and no news is good news on the. Park Pilot Project. Um, so that that was good to hear as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, just following the agenda through now, um, move on to. Section five, counselor inquiries. Do any uh, committee members bring any inquiries uh, forward tonight? Counselor Bernhardt.
Yes, um, Ms. Winter was going to put it up on the screen for me. So uh, please provide information on the fiftieth street maintenance for street amenities around loosened grates around trees in Santraville. Which can be a hazard to pedestrians. Is there a summer or fall maintenance program that takes place annually? And if not, how could we ensure that this is part of our regular service levels?
Thank you for bringing that forward, Counselor Bernhardt. We eagerly anticipate a answer to that. Um, moving on to section six now, closed session. Uh, is there a committee member willing to make a motion to move into closed session, please?
Mayor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will, I'm assuming the motion would put on the screen. Or I can just wing it. Thank you for coming. I move that council went to closed session at a time pursuant to the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act, section twenty one. At seven twenty seven PM.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion on the motion, um, please vote. Passes five nil. Thank you.
What's the uh, little shirt? Oh, it's orange shirt day. It looked, it looked yellow from here. I see it now though.
Are we uh, are we live again? We are live. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I will call to order the special council meeting of Tuesday, December nineteenth. Of Beaumont City Council, immediately following our community, the whole meeting at seven thirty seven PM. Uh, we had did the line acknowledgement earlier. We do it again this for now. Do we do it again? I thought we did. Okay. I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all first peoples of this land, whether it be a first nation. Maitin Inuit descent and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich a vibrant communities across the land. As we gather here in Treaty Six territory and the homeland of the Maitin nation, we acknowledge that we are all treaty people and have ongoing responsibilities to protect. And honor the treaty, the inherent rights of the people and the land. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Madam uh, Kirk, is there any change to the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have any additions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Member Council, willing to move the adoption of the agenda, please. Councilor McCook, Kat, you have the floor.
Move that the September nineteenth, twenty twenty three special council agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you, Counselor. Discussion on the motion. See none, counsel. Would you please vote on the motion before you? Oh, right, Steve, I forgot about that. Give me one second. Let's take a verbal vote on that. If you can, keep the things moving in favor. Here unanimously, thank you. And with that, Steve, let me just do the sign in here. Counsel, would you please re-sign in, please? That's everybody. We're good. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the minutes of the committee, the whole July eighteenth, twenty twenty. Oh, that's not me. Hang on. Next on our agenda is the business items, three point one, change the council regular meeting schedule, organizational meeting and budget meetings. Uh, Ms. Bujia, I believe you're presenting this evening, so when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you very much and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sandy Bujia, Director of Legal and Legislative Services. I'm here to present this brief report to council regarding uh, potential changes to council's meeting schedule. As council is aware, our organizational meeting was originally scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty fourth. However, with the timing of the by-election and the time required to have the new counselors confirmed. And sworn in, that necessitates moving the organizational meeting. One of the difficulties is that the MGA regulates how long we have to hold the organizational meeting. The latest date we could hold it is October thirtieth. So what administration would like to propose is that we change the date of the organizational meeting. So that it will fall on October thirtieth. This will allow us to have the results of the by-election confirmed. And also to swear in the new counselors prior to the organizational meeting. So that is our first request. Um, second, we wanted to be proactive and take a moment to check in with council. As you're aware, the budget is a a pretty onerous process and it requires a lot of work from administration as well as from council. Right now, we have the budget dates that's in our, set in our annual calendar. So we expect the. Draft proposed budget to be presented to council on November fourteenth. Following that, there will be a period of question and answer that we normally facilitate. And then there are three dates set for budget deliberations being November twenty ninth, thirtieth and December, December first. Provided that council has completed its deliberation of the proposed budget. The intention would be to bring the updated budget for council's consideration at that final meeting in December, which is December twelfth. With the election of the two new counselors, we're aware that we have two new people who may not have any familiarity with this process. Um, and they'll be moving from election to budget pretty quickly. Which I know everyone on this bench is familiar with, with their own experiences after a general election. Administration is of course making plans to support the new counselors and provide them the necessary training so that they can participate. Meaningfully in the budget process. That said, we also wanted to make sure that we checked in with council to make sure that there are no concerns with the budget dates as planned. If there are, we're certainly happy to hear council's comments and then come up with some. Alternative solutions i- if that's necessary. So I just wanted to. Put both of those items on the table and I'm just going to turn to my colleague in the back, our Director of Finance. And see if I missed anything on the budget piece. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bujia. I appreciate that. Um, do you want us to vote on the. Organizational meeting change first and discuss the idea of budget? Or how do you wish us, what's the easiest way to proceed on this?
Um, if council is comfortable with the change to organizational meeting, then we can dispense with that motion. I I think our clerk has something ready.
Okay, let's put the motion on the screen and I'll ask anybody interested in making that motion. CNNs, I'll make the motion and I move that the twenty twenty three annual council and committee of the whole meeting schedule be amended. By changing the date of the twenty twenty three organizational meeting from Tuesday, October twenty four, twenty twenty three. To Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty three, administration provide notice of the meeting change to the public. Discussion on the motion, members of council. Counselor Barnhart, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a question. I don't have any problem with it, but does that cancel the meeting on the twenty fourth?
It does. No, we would be canceling the twenty fourth outright. So if this motion passes, we'll make the change. Um, to your calendars as well as give public a notice of public.
So instead of a Tuesday meeting, we have a Monday meeting and we don't have a meeting on the twenty.
Correct.
Counselor, Marco Swain, Sam?
Sorry, but we would still have a regular council meeting, though. We just wouldn't have the organizational meeting.
We would just limit the items to the organizational meeting?
Sorry, on the twenty-fourth?
Uh, we would not have any items on the twenty-fourth. We were gonna cancel the twenty-fourth entirely. And just hold the organizational meeting on the thirtieth.
So then that that leads me to the, the question around the October tenth. Discussion, I don't know if it's printed into this, but I'll bring it up now and you should tell me not to or not. There's a poll, like, when should we host that? Why wouldn't we just move whatever we needed on the tenth to that?
Um, we are struggling because we're down to counselors with achieving quorum for our meetings. So for October tenth, we've been working behind the scenes to move everything that can possibly be moved. We have one item pending, the review related to section five forty-five and five forty-six of the MGA, that's the viladard matter. That's a very lengthy item, so we're not able to tack that on to another council meeting, which is why we're looking for another date. To deal with that matter specifically. Um, it's just too long of an item to deal with it on top of. A regular council agenda.
I, I, and so we, we can't do that on the twenty-fourth? Is it too late?
Um, we could, we could. We would have to verify the availability of the parties because there is legal counsel, but that would be a possibility.
Yeah, and I, I know I owe a response. Um, Shama is diligently messaging me multiple times, so I'll, I'll leave it there. I'll talk to you offline. I just didn't, I didn't understand why. We would cancel this whole meeting, yet we couldn't find enough people there, so, you know, I'll chat you offline. I'm good with the motion. It all makes sense.
Okay. If the discussion on the motion. See none, council, I will now call you to ask you to vote on the motion before you on the screen. And that carries unanimously, five nil. Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Bujia. Uh, the second part of your presentation was a discussion on council's comfort zone with, uh. The discussion, the timing is everything and I know we all began our council careers. Council Barner's third term already and over her very first term probably was a fire hose from day one, as we all had the same experience. I think our new counselors should be prepared for the workload as part of the old, they be a big part of council, so. I'm comfortable with the timeline we have in place and I'm confident the counselors who will be successful. Will be prepared for the workload that they're going to entail, given the timing of the by-election and the budget, the way it is set up, so. I'm comfortable with going forward with the timing. Councilor McCook, do you wish to make a comment, follow the Councilman, Ben Newkirk?
Yeah, my only question is, um, just with the turnaround from November fourteenth, um. With the questions and then, um, we go into budget, um, deliberations on the twenty-ninth, is that. Normally, there is a significant amount of questions from council, um, so is that enough time for administration to kind of turn that around?
Mr. DeBlanco?